Okay, it's 6:01, August 14th. We're gonna start a work session meeting. Michelle is present, our clerk. Josh Sletman, Jeff Sletman, and Mike Gould is out sick. We have a couple guests with us. Parker Riordan is here. And Steve, what was your last name?
Gavoni.
Steve Gavoni. Why don't you go ahead and tell us about yourself, Steve?
So my name is...
It'll reach you, no problem.
My name is Steve Gavoni. I'm an engineer with Wentworth Partners and Associates out of Scowhegan, Maine. Michelle and I were just having this conversation. We specialize in historic restoration and bridges. So that's kind of the two areas that I focus my firm on. We do do other components within that. But we came up here... Well, when were we up here? This goes back a couple of months ago. We were up here to do a walkthrough of the town hall. We had other reports and the MMA report that we were looking at. They wanted to... We were asked to come look and confirm with what the MMA report had in it and see if there's any way to move forward from there. And at that time, I was asked to submit a package that would help the town then write an engineering proposal. So I did those things.
Yep.
And then, of course, I bid on it as well. And that's basically why we're... That's why I'm here today, I guess, is just to bring you up to date as to what we saw and I guess where to go.
So your walkthrough was done with Jeff Libby, the previous town manager, correct?
He wasn't with us. So I had William Timpkin from my office and myself, and we basically did the walkthrough.
Yourself.
Yeah. Jeff was there for a little while, let us in, kind of went through the spaces with us, starting in the basement and up into... And then we spent the next two and a half hours in the building, just...
So you've been floor to ceiling, top, up on the roof?
Attic, the whole thing, yes.
Yep, you have.
Yep.
I've seen some of the preliminary stuff that you've sent us via email. So my interpretation of it is we're roughly $40,000 to enter under contract to have the engineering study done on the building?
Yeah, and that study is... And I actually put this right in, right in the kind of the opening statement here, the scope of services. What my plan of action is, or what my normal plan of action is, to give you guys a master plan so that as... Not just for the stuff that, you know, we're trying to immediately cover, but how we don't get into this position again.
Right.
You know, the old buildings, they all require, and this one, they all require work along the way. But if that work is being done along the way, then you can keep up with it and you can be ahead of it. What I find with older buildings in particular is that, especially with these buildings of that era, anyway, what I find is work that's done after the fact, the renovations, and especially when they change out how a roof works or how walls breathe, and then again, where drainage goes, that's what causes the biggest damage to these buildings. And I am, you know, my suspicion here is when they recreated the parking lot out here, you know, they brought that so much higher than the building was ready to have. And then that, you know, that snow and ice got caught in there and just was able to, you know, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, but it was pushing, pushing on your basement walls. So I see the damage there, and that damage caused damage in other spots as well. But we... A lot of these buildings, and I'll give you an example, just because I have one here of the pictures. I took most of these shots this morning, just to give you an idea. This is obviously a big old house in Scowhegan. When I say I do this historic restoration, I do it with passion because, and I do it right. And when I say that, it's because I mean it. That's my own house.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not second, you know, I'm not... I know the amount of work that I'm doing on this house is something that nobody else is going to spend to get my basement to be waterproof right now. And I'm gonna spend about 120 grand. And yeah, I didn't even show you the work inside the house to get to that point, but I had a jackhammer up everything. It's been a daily nightmare. But I know the building's gonna last another 200 years if we do it correctly now. And again, if you're looking at the house again, the problem was that that house at one time had a slate roof. It had copper gutters and copper downspouts. The downspouts went into the basement. They landed in a cistern, a CER cistern, that they used to wash clothes. So the basement functioned by getting all that water into the basement and then letting it drain out from the basement. Everything worked nicely until they took the gutters off and the downspouts. And then they put on the metal roof. This is before I bought the house. And then all the water just started damaging the basement. So that's... The way it was built was the way it was meant to function. We just need to get the buildings back to that.
One of the things, for me personally, I was chair of the committee. We, our previous select board basically moved us out of that building rather than approach the problems it had and do it as repairs as we went. They moved us into a rented space, so that changed the scope of what we gotta do to move back in. Probably not good, but the other side of it, if we tackle it, it's gotta be done right. It's gotta be engineered. It's gotta be... And that's where we're at, as you know. One of the things that I'm glad to see with your proposal is the passion for the old building. That's something most people don't have, that, you know, that are in your shoes, doing what you do. You know, they'd rather engineer a new structure and burn this one down.
Yeah, no. You're never getting that back.
You couldn't. You couldn't build that these days. Our committee did a bunch of work on how to move in for the least amount of money, because that's what we're up against as a town. We're in a building right now that isn't as close to the code that it's supposed to be at as the one we moved out of. But unfortunately, to move back into this building, it's gotta be done. We had looked at a number of different avenues on the foundation, what to do with it. I'm curious to know what your thoughts are on where to go with the foundation.
Yeah, so similar to what you see there, you know, we gotta, from one side at a time, one side and then half the front. We've gotta, we've gotta get the water... The water's the issue. The water's moving the building. And for whatever the subsoils are in there, they have to have enough clays in them that are absorbing the water during the year. And then those clays are just having enough time to expand when they freeze. That issue is just pushing on the building and causing the foundations to buckle in. And that's... So again, excavating all of that, getting that, all that drainage pressure, getting that water pressure off those walls, and then being able to push those walls back into place. It's gonna be a slow process. It's because you don't wanna, you know, rattle the building and start cracking windows and all that. So it's gonna be a slow process to do that. And be hydraulic jacks, you know, hydraulic jacks to start, and then from there, it'd be screw jacks, so you can just come in there and quarter turn them once a week for a couple of months. But yeah, that's really gonna be approached. Slow and steady wins the race, but they will have no more water pressure on them, because what we'll do on the outside, this is, it's a double chance, right? It's an opportunity to insulate the outside while we, while we get that stone base against there. And so long as we're, so long as there's no water pressure, again, the water will freeze thaw. But so long as there's no water pressure against that building, it will not move anymore than what it already has.
One of the things we had looked at, we had looked at replacing the foundation. We had looked at some of what you're talking about. And we had another company that came in and gave us an opinion back when we were a committee, before this even was voted on by the town. We were a committee trying to save the building at that point. This TC Halford came in and they gave us a quote. Their idea was similar. They felt like, all they did was the foundation piece of it, but felt like the drainage had to be addressed first. And then they wanted to do a steel structure inside and pour a wall against it so it can't move anymore. And we had mixed feelings in the committee, mixed feelings in the community of which way to go with this, whether we pour new concrete walls, do we straighten the ones that are there, do we use this TC Halford system? And they called it a stable lock wall. They pour a new wall inside and they pin it to the slab and pin it to the, into the outer sill of the building. The bottom line is, you're an engineer, that's what you do. So your opinion is very valuable here. If we, if we were to, you know, to bring you on board and do this project, you'd give us a complete outline of your plan on how to do it?
I think, well, as you're, you know, going through this process and the fact that you guys have such a background, I think one of the first things that I'd do, and I think, one of the first things I would do is sit down with the committee and see where, how you got to where you are. And then, again, understand the master plan, because obviously there's the use of the building back to a town office, but you've also got the theater on the second floor.
That's right.
And how do you bring that back to life as well? So, 'cause I imagine the town meeting, I don't know how big town meetings get, but I don't know where you're having those now either, but that's...
We're borrowing space from a church.
Okay, so a town meeting would be back there and any local talent shows or anything like that. And you have, you have a beautiful theater up there, a beautiful, you know, Royal Maine Theater. So it'd be, it's a waste for that to be sitting up there and not accomplish anything. So that, again, getting back to what's our end game and then moving backwards to see how we're gonna get to that end game and all the components. But the other thing I'm really happy to hear is that you guys have started looking at all these processes and which ones are the best. You know, each one is gonna have an effect on the outside of the building, what it looks like, and each one's gonna have an effect on the inside of the building, the space in the basement, whether that becomes usable space after or what.
Right.
It's gonna be interesting to see how you guys feel about what, which, what the real priority is one over the other, because that's gonna really head me in the direction that I need to go.
Right. Do you have any questions, Josh?
You know way more about this project than I do.
I wish my father was here. He's still in the hayfield. My father was part of the 92 renovation. He's been, he's been a part of that building. He did all the trim work downstairs in it. My mother's done the stained glass. Had a lot of history with the building. That's part of the reason I became passionate about it and got on the committee to try to save the building. They were, they were trying to get us to vote to turn it into an apartment house. And I didn't want to see that for the building. As it turns out, we put it in front of the people and the vote was like 160 something to 30 something, I believe.
Wow.
In favor of keeping the building. So we feel like at this point, as long as it works financially, you know, that we have the backing of our town. So there's a couple of concerns that I had. First is historical integrity as we go through this. The building is a historical building. It's listed, as I understand, on the historical registry. Therefore, things like the brick around the foundation, some of the stained glass and some of those things, I think it's gonna be important to keep that in the back of our mind as we go. You know, maintaining that integrity so that we can keep it listed as a historical place.
I will, so if I can interject there.
You can.
So all of the procedures I spell out, that is, whether, you know, it doesn't matter what component of the building we're fixing at the time, they all meet the National Park Service Historic Briefs. And those are the same briefs that are used for, that the Maine Historic Commission will use, the Maine Historic Society supports. So yeah, that's, those things are critical. Even when we, you know, when I have clients that just want to mothball a building, I give them, you know, I go, I reference the National Briefs and say, this is how we can do it. So if you want to restore the building later on, you didn't just walk away and now it's getting moldy on the inside, because that's, that's a condition that you want the building to breathe. So even if that was the case, you know, I'd be making the recommendations coming right from the National Park Services Briefs.
How long does a project like this take for you?
Well, I'm imagining this one is probably gonna be like a 10-year project, just because of how much the town is gonna put in in a certain year and then what we're gonna, what the goals might be for a certain year. Again, I would say historic restoration, it's tough, because there's so few that know how to do it correctly. So for example, you have the slate roof that kind of goes all the way around the building right now. You know, there's only two or three people on the Maine Historic Commission's list that are qualified to even do that kind of repair work. So there's a shortlist there. When that, when the roof was repaired, the top, the flatter portion of the roof, that was done wrong. And I can, you know, you can spot that a mile away, just by, when you're driving up to the building, that they should've used an anodized molding or copper molding that would've matched what was originally there. And instead, they came in with the, you know, shiny silver, and this is a brand-new-looking piece. So, you know, that's the kind of stuff, and that, you know, that's in good shape right now, so that's not what we're gonna touch. But we're just gonna make sure that that doesn't happen again as we work our way down the building or up the building, however we approach this. But yeah, I don't, I don't want this to be a fast process. I don't want this to be a very precise and well-done project. That's, that's how I would approach this.
Eliminate backtracking.
So if it wasn't a budget standpoint, say the money was all there?
If the money's all there, then yeah, you try to move forward with as much as you can get done. And I can guarantee you're gonna run into a surprise here and there.
Right.
And all of a sudden, the money's not there. You know, if you're using the right guys for the work, then it's, or I should say, if you're using the right entities, right companies for the work, some, you know, it gets expensive to do stuff with a historic building. And believe me, I can, I can tell you that straight up.
Yeah. I live in a 150 to 200-year-old house.
Yeah.
So getting back into the building as a town office isn't gonna be instant. It's not gonna be a year before we're back in the building?
Well, it depends on, again, money, obviously, but really, it's about the master plan. If that's, if the master plan is to get you guys back into the building and then we're working, we're working around an occupied building, I mean, that obviously adds to time. But, you know, it sounds like the first floor is really the critical floor at this point to get back into. So that's, if that's where we need to be, then that's, that'll be the approach. And I think that ultimately, I think you guys are renting the building you're in now.
We are.
So yeah, I mean, why, why they, you got a building that's not on the tax base here that you should be occupying, and now you're renting another building in a downtown, so it's a double whammy. So yeah, I would say getting back, bringing that back, that rent money back into the fold of repairs on the building is much better than sending it out the door. So I'd be working toward that goal. We just need to understand that there's an extent of work that needs to get done.
How to get there.
Yeah. And the MMA, the MMA will work with you. So you know, they gave you that whole list of stuff that needs to get done. If you're moving toward that, it buys you time each, each way. I've got another project right now going in Gardner Construction, actually starts next week. It's a fire station. And the fire station is, it was made with cinder blocks back in the 50s, so not CMUs, but cinder blocks. And then cinder blocks are actually disintegrating from the road salts. So the first three courses of blocks are, so the building's crushing over the weight of these cinder blocks that are disintegrating. So the MMA gave them a year to fix it, and then it became a second year and a third year, because they were, they already had in place a plan to build a new fire station, and they're really resistant on spending the money to, if we're putting the money here, we can't put it here. But it, once the fire station costs, for, you know, the last four years, so now the MMA is forcing that issue. But again, they went from, you gotta, you know, you got one year to fix it, to it became four years to fix it. So that does happen as well. But if you're showing progress, I think they'll just keep... All right, so you didn't get to the electrical panel this week. Maybe next year you get to it. They, they...
So you have a feeling that if we took some of the, some of their big concerns off the list, that we could occupy the space in the office downstairs?
Yeah.
While this project happened?
Yeah, so yeah, so long as we're, we're, again, if we're master planning the construction so that phases don't affect areas that you guys are in, and then, you know, if we're gonna have to move phases, then we're switching from one side of the building to the other as an occupancy or something like that. Again, it gets, it gets a little costly that way, when we're doing that, but that's also buying you time. If you guys have all that money in the pot right now, and we're gonna try to drive, you know, to get at least the basement done and get the first floor occupied, then those other items, the ones on the second floor, you know, there's the beams need, need another poached down now, because they have, the term is, they've crept. So wooden beams, wooden beams and concrete beams creep over time. So it's, they're, it's a deflection, but it's a, it's a settling as well. It's, well, kinda like me. And so as that, you know, that beam will creep, but you're never gonna get it back to what it was. So we're not gonna try to get it back to where it was, so much as just make sure it can't creep any further. That's really the goal there, but that...
What would you do with that? Would you put a post under it?
Yeah, that, I was looking at that. It probably needs at least one post and possibly two. And then where those posts line up, we wanna make sure that we're not impacting office space down below in a negative way. So it's gonna be just making sure we're traveling that load all the way down to the basement in some way, shape, or form. But yeah.
One of the things that we've gotta be concerned with as we go through this, for us to be able to use the second floor, we've got some accessibility things to deal with in this plan. We gotta have some sort of a lifter, an elevator or whatnot to get to the top. And all those things need to be figured in right from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
What are your thoughts? Do you think?
Well, let me ask the big question. Would that elevator ever need to go to the basement? Let me just start with that question.
I don't see that it would.
Right. So so long as it doesn't, then we can use the, because, you know, generally under these elevators, there's a pit.
Right.
Because you've got, you basically have three levels with the mezzanine in that area. So we have three levels to really think about, is occupied levels that need that, that accessibility.
And there is a pit there currently where the elevator was supposed to be when they did the floor and the cellar.
Oh, really? So they were thinking that the basement was gonna, it was gonna go all the way down to the basement then?
Well, there was a pit for the, I don't think the elevator was planning on going to the basement, but we understood, when, when I looked at that floor, there's a cutout right where the elevator is gonna be.
Huh.
In the concrete, it's dirt floor.
Interesting. I remember this, I remember it. I didn't know what it was for, so...
That's what it's for.
Thinking about the elevator going, because if it, if it doesn't have to go to the elevator, down to the basement, then we can actually use the, the height of the basement as the pit.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't, you don't need to go any further down than, than what you already have, because you have the, that...
There'd be no reason for people to be down there, other than employees or service technicians.
Right, yeah, right. So yeah, which is a very specific occupancy.
But I think that if we, if we start looking at the second floor, that definitely has to be in the plan, so to speak. This, and again, I wish my father could be here. He has so much more information on this than anybody in town, really.
Well, I think the idea, once again, is, you know, if, if, if the board of the town decides to move forward, then that's, that's, again, the first place I go, is I'm gonna be sitting in front of that committee. And I don't know if you found this still on the committee or lost it back on the committee, but that's, that's really, I need to, I need to be picking brains, I feel, because that's gonna help me a lot.
So we took the committee right to a point of getting a vote by the people to move forward with this building. Once it went to the town, the town voted for it. We appropriated a chunk of money to start dealing with this building. The committee's done no more work since then. We've stopped. Now we're to the point where, as you know, step one, phase one is engineering.
So then I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, my hopes are, at that point, that we reactivate that committee, because they are, they are going to be the liaison, or better yet, I'm really the liaison between the end goals, which really seemed to be like that would be the committee's responsibility. I'm the liaison between the end goals and the, you know, building codes and historic codes and all that stuff. So I'm really working, I'm really working on their vision, would be my, my real task.
So before you actually send out contractors and ask for them for bids on what is it gonna cost to do this, what's it gonna cost, and put together a package, do you really need to meet with the committee?
Absolutely.
Before that all gets...
Absolutely, and probably more than once. I, this, this is, I am, all I am, all I'm gonna be at this point is the resource for the committee. Again, the committee's goals are our target, and all I am is the resource for them. Like I am, I am at their service to get them there. And that, which includes then any of the design, you know, analysis, design, and then putting it out to bids with the, with the proper contractors, you know, walking those bids through, making sure we understand what those are. Those are all gonna happen at the committee level. And then by that time, the committee, even if it's me presenting back to the select board at that point, then, or this committee's going back to the select board, then they're coming back to the select board and asking for their approvals. So that, that's really how that will work.
How it works, okay.
Yep. And in the end, ultimately, it's your stamp of approval on this building is what they're looking for at the MMA level, right?
Yes, yeah, yep. And really, what you'll be looking for too, because that's, it's a protection all the way around. It's protecting the integrity of what you guys are trying to do. It's service, it's providing the MMA with the security, I guess, that they need, that you guys are moving forward with, with an engineer or with someone that is familiar with, with the building codes.
Your process, your piece of this project, as I interpret it, you said liaison is a good word, but each piece of it would be bid out to specific contractors that handled that part. You don't do any of the work yourself.
I do not do the work myself. No, it would be bid out to contractors who are competent in the areas that were specifically looking for it.
And you have a contractor list that you've worked with before.
I absolutely do, yes.
You do?
Just, just as another by note to that, if there's something that's really specific, you know, oh, we need some brass handrails that nobody else has around, then we send out a request for qualifications, like that, instead of the request for bids, we send out a request for qualifications. And then at that point, we get those back, we sit down with the committee, and we say, all right, here's, here's all the projects they're referencing. Let's call the references, see what they got. Let's go out there, feel them, touch them. I've done that before too, so we have eyes on work that's been done, so we can sit there and really choose a contractor for a specific component.
What are your thoughts? As a group, we looked at some of the grants that were available, which we didn't qualify for most of them. What are your thoughts if we were to come across grant money and... What are your thoughts, um, if we were to come across grant money and applying it?
Oh, God, yeah.
You'd, you'd be into that?
Absolutely. Yep, one hundred percent. Yeah, it's tough because unless, municipalities have a tough time getting, um, getting historic, uh, grants for restorations like this, because they are on the, um, they're already a non-tax entity and this is, um, but is there an underlying 501(c)(3) anywhere in town that, uh, that, you know, this could be their, this could be built into their, um, mission statements?
The only thing that we really have is we have a historic society. They have their own building on the other side of the stream over here, and that building also is failing.
Yep.
Um, if the two were to ever merge and they were to occupy space in here, that could change the, the ability to, the, the grants that you can apply for.
Yeah.
Um, but currently, they are on the other side of the river in another building.
So, uh, it would be interesting to find out if they are a registered 501(c)(3), because if they are, um, then that, that merger could be worth, you know, large amounts of money for both. It's a win-win. Maybe we're trying to restore both buildings at the same time.
I personally would like to see the historical society right in that building. I think it makes them more relevant.
Yep.
When you go in and you've gotta stand there and wait to register your car, and there's a whole room full of artifacts, it's gonna make them more relevant, in my opinion.
Yep.
But, um, that's just my opinion, you know, we haven't broached the subject with anybody, so that's just my opinion.
Would the library move back in there? Cause it looks like that.
We've closed our library.
Yeah.
Permanently, sold the books. It's gone.
Yep.
Yep. So that, that's some of what we've looked at, and some of what the committee looked at is, is future use of the building, not just to justify its existence, but just ashamed to have that much restored space and not have a purpose for it.
Yeah, yes. Even your attic's bigger, you know, bigger than most houses.
Right, right.
I'm not, I'm making no promises about getting into attic, I'm just saying.
No.
Even your attic's bigger than most houses.
Right. So in, in this, do you have a, is there a rough quote for the cost of services?
Yeah, it's, it's, it really works as a menu, um, so that you are, there are, there's the items that, uh, I perform, uh, the architectural design services, structural design services, permitting, um, and then, you know, you know, bidding out the stuff, and then the construction management. So those are the five line items, and then within that come the, you know, the cost associated really with each line item or item.
Okay, I see how you've broken it down on the bottom of the pages for each section.
Yes, yep.
And again, this, what you've got here is the engineering part of it, your part of it.
Yes, yep.
Now, when you, when you engineer this project, if you were to take this on, so this is, as an example, this sixteen hundred dollars right here is, is our fee from you to us to perform this. Now, when that goes out to bid, um, when you bid that, there's no additional cost for the bidding process. Like, we're gonna ask you for a quote for the engineering, and it's gonna cost us to do that. Is there a cost with each of the other contractors, uh, to place a bid on this?
No, they're, they'd be bidding on the work that they're gonna do.
Right, they don't charge for that.
They don't charge to bid on it, no.
Okay.
They're trying to get the.
So there's no other fees in there?
No, not, not from my end. So even when I, when I, you know, technically I bid on this as well, um, you guys put out an RFP, uh, that stayed to what you were looking for, and then I responded to that RFP.
Right.
Because I walked the building, I, you know, I can even say I had an advantage because I'd already been in here.
Hmm.
Um, but I also knew what I was up against, uh, but yeah, that's, that's how they respond. I didn't, you didn't get charged for me to come in, do the bid, you know, do a bid on it. Unfortunately, or fortunately for me, I had already been in the building, so, uh, because there was a report that needed to go back to the MMA at that point, but, uh, so I had, again, I had the advantage of not needing to come look at it.
Right.
That's, that's pretty normal in our bidding process, as you come, then that's what happens, when if I go to bid this project out, I'm gonna have a, um, a mandatory pre-bid conference right here on site for whichever item we're bidding at that time with the contractors and say, this is what we're gonna do, I'm gonna walk them through step by step.
Right.
Uh, the engineering that we did, what we expect from them, and then, you know, any other, um, contractual, um, attachments that are, or contractual agreement parts that are gonna be built into this, you know, they have so many days to get it done, has to be done before a certain date or whatever the restrictions might be. That'll all be part of their bid package, and then that's what they're bidding on, they're not bidding on just showing up.
Then you come to us and say, this is what it's gonna cost to get the building done to this point?
Yeah, so I would, I would, uh, again, I'm, I'm gonna strongly recommend that I'm working with the committee, um, and then, then I, I would sit down with the committee, I'd explain the process, um, what, you know, cause they would've been, they would've been part of it from day one anyway. They would've known what was going out to bid, and then just to go out to bid comes back to the select board, no matter what. You guys have to approve every single step along the way, so that, so that it is legit. Um, the bid openings, because this is, this is a public building, uh, and I, I don't know exactly what the ordinance is reading in terms of like what the max min on the bids, but, uh, again, all that stuff happens here in front of this board. Um, so what the, what the committee does for us though, is the committee should be making recommendations to this board, and hopefully this board supports the committee enough to say, yeah, their recommendations are, are the direction we wanna go. That like, that's, that's really what you, um, in my mind, cause you're, you're all volunteers in, right? You're both on the committee side and on the select board side, so, um, you know, you guys are getting the, the, you're getting reinforced with those decision makings by your own peers, basically, your own people who live in this town as well. And then, um, and again, I'm, I'm representing the town of Sangerville. That's, that's, that's all my function is to represent the town of Sangerville. I'm both on who putting on this project and the work, you know, guaranteeing the performance of the project, and then, um, guaranteeing the safety of the project. So those are the things that I would say that, that are my tasks.
I think one of the concerns that I see, um, the timeline thing on occupancy, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the question we're gonna have to have the answer to when we talk to the people of the town of Sangerville, when we put the committee back together. Uh, the committee all still has everything. We just, we haven't done anything because we just came to this point where we've voted to do the project, and we've earmarked some money for the project, and I think there's gonna be a few big questions, that's gonna be the biggest one. Timeline to reoccupy a space in it to get out of our rented space. I think that's gonna be the first question that we've gotta, gotta have the answer to, and I know that's difficult from, from your position, cause.
Yeah, there needs to be time at this stage, there needs to be time for the engineering, time to take it out to bid.
Right.
And then.
And some of it's gonna be done before we move in.
Right. We're already looking at the end of October at that point, and it's really hard to start all that civil work.
Right.
Around the edge of the building at that time, especially if there's gonna be, uh, concrete poured or anything like that too, so that's, that's another concern, is the overnights are gonna require heated concrete, that's an additional cost that we don't wanna hit.
Right.
So yeah, so, so the question is how, how much longer, yeah, it's the middle of August now, we're up against, we're up against a timeline here, and.
Right.
All of the good contractors are booked for.
They're finishing their year.
Yeah, so it's gonna be hard to, we're gonna struggle to find qualified contractors because this, this really is precision work, even for an operator. This has to be an operator used to working near stone foundations, and if, you know, this isn't working in the woods, this, this is, you know, this is, these are stone foundations on a three-story building.
Right.
If you're not familiar with working around those, and you don't understand that the walls are probably battered, and you don't, if those, if those things aren't already in your head as the operator, you know, you, you're, this might not be your project.
Right. I think we, as a committee, we saw basically the same things you're saying, you know, the damage that the pooling water, the freezing water, whatever it was, by the entrance. And, but, and the other thing that happened was they had that bulkhead, and we had a group of people that thought we was wasting heat out through the bulkhead, so they insulated the wall at.
I saw that.
At the bulkhead. You, you saw what happened.
Yeah.
And it pushed.
Yeah, the, the two points, right? Cause the drainage, the original drainage comes down this way, and then all of a sudden the bulkhead goes in, and that water had no place to go, so even though they, it appears like they put a drainage tile or a drainage, uh, you know, perforated pipe up and around it, it's up too high.
Right.
So all that water's still getting trapped on the low side, you know, and then the freeze thaw just did its thing. And this is what I was saying earlier, most, most damage to the building, so I'm showing you my house, they added a bulkhead at one time after they did all that work, and all my, I have valleys, I have a four valley house, and all the water sheds from that valley to the uphill side of the bulkhead.
Right.
And it had no place to go, but into my stone basement. That's the only place it could go. So it was blown apart in the wall, as you can see.
Same thing right next to it.
Yep, so, yeah, this is, uh, this is, yes, um, I'm living this, I'm living this dream.
So your proposal would be to, to put anchors in the wall and, and jack the wall out so it was straight, and then correct the drainage and insulation?
All the way around. I would take the, I'd take all the back pressure off, so the excavation would be first.
First, yeah.
Get all the pressure off the wall so that we have something to, now it's not, we're not pushing against soil that's already, yeah, cause as the wall starts to buckle, the soil's filling it in. As the wall starts to buckle more, it's filling it in.
Hmm.
So we gotta get all that soil out of there so we can push it all back.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's the first thing, is get the pressure off the wall so it doesn't wanna continue moving in, and then, and then start the process of the mix, yep.
I had another question, I lost it. That happens. Um, some of these guys were on, on the original committee.
Okay.
Akka was. Bryce, you were on the original committee too.
A little bit, I did a little. I gave the options for maybe, you know, modular type thing.
Yep.
But they, they go that way, obviously, so.
No.
It's fine, which is, but, yeah, I just had one quick question though, if you don't mind, just real fast.
Sure.
You said you had a list of contractors, what, let's say that you, we accepted one of the contractors, what is the time between their taking the job and they're actually doing the job? Like, does it, obviously, like you said, this end of this year is pretty late.
Right.
But what is the timeframe? Someone might give up for a year or two, I mean, what's the, is it thirty-six months? Twenty-four, twelve, six?
Well, uh, so when we take it out to bid, we're gonna, all, in the bid documents, we're saying that this is the timeframe, that we, we want the work to get done.
Right.
So there, there will be, uh, your, your startup date, um, you know, your fifty percent completion date, your substantial completion dates, those are all built into the bid, so the contractors, that would be good, and I obviously understand that.
Does that limit the amount of contract, different contracts?
Sometimes it does, yeah. I, I can give you examples, uh, again, I was talking to Michelle all this earlier, so I do a lot of bridge work.
Right.
And, um, just because of all the ring that we had last year, the bridges that we were supposed to put in the water last year, they couldn't put in, so this year we've got a double load going.
Right.
And, uh, so I'm bidding out to, you know, normally anywhere from twelve to fifteen contractors, uh, is where my package goes out, that many contractors, two bids in certain areas. I'm getting five showing up on the bid box and two bids showing up.
How many different contractors do you think that you are available to get to this job? Like, are we talking ten? And maybe two can do it? We talking fifteen and seven can do it? I mean, what?
Uh, it's gonna depend.
You're gonna two?
I'm really struggling with it's gonna be done this year, so.
Right.
Maybe next year they're, they're.
It'd be more, choice.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah, especially if we're bidding this out, um, if we're bidding this out in February, uh, that's when the contractors are the hungriest in February.
That's what I'm saying, if you get down now, we might have a better option price later.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Because now you're gonna get top dollar, because you only have a couple people to do, a couple different choices. More choices, the cheaper, I would say.
And like you said, the heated concrete and all.
Yeah.
All the other things that are gonna, gonna happen.
Yep.
Well, you don't wanna rush the job either, you know, you.
No, right.
So to, to be able to simply be in the building, I know what the goal is, ooh, we gotta get in there.
Right.
But we don't wanna screw up.
Right. We don't wanna work around ourselves and cost money.
You know, if we don't get back in the building for two years, you know, or three years, I mean, it would be better than to rush something and then have to back.
Or spend extra two hundred grand to work around ourselves.
Right, exactly, and that's the other thing, we don't wanna be in their way either.
I mean, we're, we're paying rent, but that's by comparison probably cheaper than, than the alternative.
Well, you just brought up a good point, sometimes that rent's gonna be cheaper than us having to remobilize just to work from.
Right.
Between offices or cover.
Exactly, what, fifteen grand a year or something we pay for rent?
It's just about, yep.
You know, for fifteen thousand dollars, to have a building full of people to work around.
Yeah.
It'd cost more than that.
Well, and then on top of that, you gotta think about, in the office itself, they're gonna make noise. How are we gonna handle the older people that can hear us now with the noise above us, or phone calls, or?
Walking a plank, walking a plank across the big ditch around the building to register your snowmobile.
Yeah.
Tripping over sand. The top part is, you know, smoke detectors are gonna have to get covered during the day, and then they're gonna, covers have to come off every night, and, you know, so those are just, that's just time added to a job, because now you have someone who's specifically doing that. Alarms might go off just from the dust, so, you know, now everybody's excavating the building and, and, so.
So since your bid package, or since we bid the package out, the building has sat that much longer, and what about the mold that could possibly be in there now that wasn't there when you walked through it? Does that add a different twist to your, your package?
Um, it's, it's, it's a consideration, like I said, you know, one of, uh, one of the items that, uh, the, um, National Park Service Historic Priest tells us it's not a mothball of building, that that building wasn't mothballed correctly, so your concern is, is very legit. And then you had just mentioned that area down in the basement where the, where the insulation and the, so that is the place where moisture's coming in, so all around that area is now adding to the moisture that could be in the building, uh, so yeah, yes, what you're saying is very legit, and it's, it's, again, these are the things that we're gonna have to, it, it, we're gonna have to acknowledge what the master plan is, and then how we're gonna get there, and, but that is gonna be one of the things, while we're getting there, these things need to happen. So I can tell you, and, you know, here's my, my hint, the first thing I wanna see is the guy fixing the slate, because right now water's getting into the building from the roof in two spots. Those two spots need to be fixed right off the bat. This is not a massive, big, big money item, but it's one that I would say is critical. You know, the, you, you have shells to a building, and in this case here, the weather, the shell that protects you against the weather, the weather barrier is, has been violated. So that, we need to get that, that one fixed at the roof level, that's, whether you, whether you bring me on or not, please get the slate fixed on the roof.
Yeah.
Uh, because that one there is gonna destroy the inside of the building quicker than any of the others.
Right.
So ice skating on the second floor's not a good thing?
I didn't say that's not a good thing. How the ice got to the second floor is what's the problem, yeah.
Yeah. Now, the other, the other, the other concern that some people have brought up through this process is abatement. Um, you know, we've talked about some mold. You got that, you got lead paint, you got asbestos that we need to, that's part of your bid packages to identify if we do or don't have a problem.
Right. Yep.
Now, do you do that or do you have a contractor that comes in and does abatement?
Well, again, the, the, I don't do contracting. So all I'm doing is calling out how they, and then, you know, and then the big, big contractor would come in and do the work. Uh, I am a licensed, um, asbestos remover. I am a licensed, but again, I'm one step further because I went the extra day. I'm a licensed asbestos supervisor. Uh, I'm also a licensed lead supervisor because again, went to the extra day. So those are OSHA courses. They're forty hour, forty hour courses. Thirty, thirty-two hours gets you your license and that extra day gets you your supervisor's license. So I do have those two licenses, which means I can control, uh, well, it means I can talk the language certainly of either one of those two. Now, you know, for, for this, for the lead in here, because it's not living space, most of that can just be coated, you know, painted over. Um, it, when it's, when it's introduced to a housing space, especially if you're on killer, maybe in the house, that's where it has to be completely abated. So there's just, again, function of the building matters.
There were concerns about the horsehair plaster and, um, our code enforcement officer started in this whole abatement thing. And what he had learned was, again, if it's in good condition and coated in our cer- in our circumstances, it doesn't have to be abated.
Correct. Yep.
And that was his interpretation. He was part of the committee.
He's absolutely right. Yeah. Yeah, the, but we're, we're, even when the, the building code is now being trumped by the historic preservation codes. Uh, so in some cases, like we know that if you're gonna build a brand new building now or occupy a building, this, you know, the stairs have to be eleven, eleven inch reveal tread, seven inch height is the maximum, uh, you know, five and three quarters is the minimum and yada, yada, yada. You go through the whole process with it. But well, historic, obviously the stairs are, you know, nine this way, nine that way. Um, we're allowed to keep stuff like that. You know, handrails are down to thirty-one inches instead of forty, forty-two that require for a diagram and thirty-six. So all those things are, get to remain in place because it is historic and that's, that also includes, as you just said, the horsehair plaster and all those components. So long as they're sealed, someone can't get to dig their fingers into it and, you know, stop pulling that stuff out. Cause yeah, you go through the process. Every, every bit of caulking back then was asbestos in it. The horsehair had asbestos in it. Then they painted the lead over that.
Yeah.
And it gets,
Right. That was some of the concerns as a committee that we were looking at is, you know, we didn't wanna get into a two hundred thousand dollar abatement pro- project, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't want that. But yeah.
Yeah, well, whatever. Yeah. Just,
If you had to start removing the plaster.
We didn't want any surprises that were that size.
No, historically, they want you to keep the building intact as much as possible. And if you're utilizing the building, especially if you're utilizing it the way it was originally intended. See, this was always a talent project, at least in the building. That's the original intent. That's, this to, both national historic and state historic is the absolute dream. You know, if you can get the building back to what it was, then, um, both in purpose and in form, you guys are like heroes.
Where we were at, the town, the town voted to spend up to four hundred and forty thousand dollars. To get the first floor usable is how that was presented. That's where we, that's where we stopped with it. If we're talking the whole scope of the project, we all know it's more than four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yep.
So we've got, we've still got some things like that to get through. If this is a project that could be done in phases, getting the first floor finished and occupied and getting the foundation corrected and the roof corrected. And we fit in that budget line, then, you know, we can move forward with it. If we can't, then we, we need to bring it to the people and figure out what direction they wanna go. And, you know, as a committee, we looked at it as doing the maintenance so we could stay there and not, not really doing any improvements to the building, just, just making it a usable structure. That and a total renovation are two different things. And we just, we need guidance as a town, which way to go, what to do. We're looking, you know, we're looking for grant money, obviously, and there's some out there. We just gotta figure out how to qualify for it.
Yeah. And like I said, that, that, um, to have an occupied five oh one C three in the building already had, to have a five oh one C three whose purpose is the building, um, is gonna be, that, that goes a major way. So Scott Egan's going through something similar. Our municipal building is opera, also our opera house. We now have a five oh one C three, uh, lines up productions that, uh, is gonna start managing the opera house, which now, for the first time in our history, makes us eligible for grant money that's not available to a municipality.
Right.
This is not out there for us. So, um, these foundations that like donating to performing arts, that that's an opportunity. These foundations that like donating to historic restorations, you know, that's not out there for a municipality. So,
Right.
I think if we can, again, I'll go back to, if that historic society is, is registered that way, then it's really time to tap into that resource and have them at the table, uh, with the committee and say, yeah, as a team, we can accomplish a lot more for both buildings if we wanna go that way. More, more, again, as you said, let's get you back where you belong. Let's get you back over here where you can, where you are, where you are a fixture that right off the bat, you're walking in and you're seeing you. I think that, that would go a long way.
We had an attorney on our, on our committee and, um, he practiced in another state, but his, his words of advice was same thing. You know, he pushed pretty hard towards that and we had mixed feelings in a cross-section of the committee and a cross-section of the residents, some for it, some were against it. So those are, those are, those are things we gotta look at, however we're doing it.
Yeah. I, I think if we focus on the end game, yeah, there's gonna be concessions one way or the other. Some are gonna want this to be a little different, some are, but if, if the end game is the building is gonna be up for another hundred, two hundred years, then,
Right.
Um, I think those concessions are, are, you know, it, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a smoothie.
No.
Uh, but you know, there, there's gonna be a couple strawberry chunks in there, but you gotta choke those down too and, uh, uh, but if, if we can get, if we're really looking at the end game, that's, um, that's really the quickest way to get there. Is let, let, let that committee grow to incorporate in some way, shape or form so that, um, we've got the power of that, of that nonprofit in there.
I think that was the, the questions I had. So the process of this, if we, if we make the decision, we want to select you and move forward, what does that process look like? You're gonna give us a bill for this amount of money and you're gonna start the engineering?
No, no. I, I, you know, you'll basically sign the contract, um, and, uh, this one had a, yeah, this one has a retainer. So, uh, for items, so you do the retainer that's on the page. Then that, that gets us started. And we go you, we go you and, uh, as we complete stuff.
Yep. And that, and the things we'll be built for are itemized and the hourly rate for that is?
Well, that's, yeah, the hourly rates are there, but it's really, the itemization is really happening on page. The itemization is really happening on page is, uh, four, the bottom four and the top of five. That's really, those are the, those are the board items that we, uh, what I'm gonna do and then what those items cost for me to do them.
And then we pay those as we go, as they're completed?
Yeah.
So in the contract, so we pay a sixteen hundred dollar retainer for part A and then item two on part A will be another twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's the one that's done. So if I look at part A, maybe it's a mapping of some sort. But yeah, so that's, yeah, topography, but we have some civil work to do there. And then, uh, yeah, so part A is the civil work.
Yep.
Uh, and that's, and that's probably, um, that, that's, I, I wanna get that, I would wanna get that, the physical work done right off the bat, but the civil engineering is really down the line a little bit. It's, it's really moving right into, um, getting, getting to sit down with you guys and, uh, on the architectural, definitely the structural side because the foundation walls obviously is the structural side. Any of the i- items that were, uh, called out, um, in the MVA report, we'll, you know, we'll kinda tackle as we move along.
So on page five, um, it says therefore the estimated cost of our A and E services is forty-four thousand dollars. And then it, it breaks down what that includes.
Yeah, that's all stuff about it. Yep.
Right. That's everything that I've read to that point. Okay. I'm fol- I'm following now.
Item, item six on that list is the construction management. That, that is a completely separate, you know, if, if you want me to take that role, I can take that role as well. Which puts, which would just put me out here a lot more than just, you know, when it, uh, an A and E comes in, you know, we, we are monitoring the work, uh, to make sure it meets standards, but we're really only looking generally at, you know, ten percent of the work. Certain, we're there maybe once a week, uh, days and then, you know, for an hour or two, if we're CMing, we're gonna be in their face a lot.
Right. So construction management costs, any rough idea? I mean, I, I have no idea what,
Yeah, so actually, well, that's, that, that was seventeen thousand.
Okay, right there.
That's right below it as well.
Gotcha. I see.
And again, it's, um, I, I don't think we're anywhere near that place. And that's why I do this as a menu. Uh, so it's just like going to the store. You, you get to pick and choose which ones you want and, um, you know, and that's, that's those are the ones I'll complete. Uh, you know, obviously just, you know, the foundation walls is all structural, so that's, that's maybe, that is what it is, but, um, I guess that's the best way to phrase it, it's just a menu.
The big question's gonna be from the people. They're not gonna look at any of this. They're gonna have two questions. What are we getting? How much? And at this point, it's such, that, that's a question that doesn't have an answer. We, we searched for an answer for a long period of time. What's this project gonna cost? And you probably don't have an answer either, you know? It's been a long time, but.
Well, I think, um, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember this gentleman's name, but as we, you know, it's, I can't, if we're bidding it out right now when nobody's hungry, you know, they don't, and they're, and then if we're saying there's a deadline of November thirtieth, you know,
Yep.
that, that price is gonna be double what it's gonna be if we bid it out in February and say the deadline's November thirtieth.
So once we get through this and you present the bids, we'll have an accurate number of what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, for any given component, because again, the ones doing the foundations are not the guys you're gonna wanna move.
Right.
Those are, those are two different components.
Right.
Uh, and we really wanna almost treat each section like that because you guys, uh, you guys might have a, a carpenter who's fantastic here in town and that maybe, uh, and who's unknown other than within inner circles. And that's the guy you guys want doing the trim. And, and I would say this, if it's a taxpayer in this town, um, and he's working on this building, I'm, I'm, I would rather see that than have to bring in someone from the outside. But again, it needs to be a carpenter who's familiar with historic restoration. And that sometimes means that you're not just being able to use your mitre saw at kind of forty-five.
Right.
You're actually coping and, 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 you know, making those joints fit because they're not forty-five anymore or not that ever were.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's really, uh, you know, how we gotta approach it. It's, and again, between the select board, um, and, you know, the historic society and, um, this building's restoration committee, you guys have to have names of like, like those are the ones we want. And if, if they're, uh, same thing, if there's an operator, if there's an excavation company that's, you think is qualified to, to do the work, then, you know, here we go. I, I'd rather use taxpayers doing this than go outside, uh, but sometimes that's not possible. I, I, I don't think there's, um, a slate guy in this town. But I know there's one up in Monson, the other one's down on the coast. Uh, so that's, that's where we're gonna head down.
Yep. Okay. I don't have any further questions. Who are you guys?
Nope, I think you've covered everything.
Neil, one of them.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because of the type of meeting that we're having tonight, they can't make any decisions at this meeting. That won't happen, luckily.
And you, you, you stated that even over that last week, so, uh, we talked about it for last week, so.
We, we wanted this to be, number one, we're, we're recording everything we do, um, so that the public can have an opinion. And what I hear, they hear. They can develop their opinion from the same information I'm using. And that's what we're trying to use for format with everything we do. So these workshops are recorded. The people are gonna have the next week to listen to them. And believe it or not, it seems to really work. I get so much input from people just listening to this.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yep. And it's, it's good information. So yeah, like, like Michelle said, this, as a workshop, we can't make a decision and, and one of our salvo is sick, so we wouldn't make a decision without him anyways, but, um, you have my interest in, in, I think, I think for us, we may wanna just invite the whole committee to come back together and talk about it before we make this decision. Just to get that input.
I think that's, I personally think that's a great idea. I, I think, I think number one, that we can move forward with this and again, it doesn't matter if it's me or not, I think that committee being back together because you're gonna, that, the only way this is gonna work is gonna, is gonna have, whoever's sitting in this seat, whoever's sitting here, me, um, or someone else, is gonna need the input from the people who wanna, who have the vision for what the building's going to be and what, what their aim is, so.
Now, you're still willing to put your stamp approval on somebody around here that you feel is qualified?
I'm putting my stamp approval on, on the drawings and the work that they should be. So they're gonna get a set of drawings from me and that's how they're gonna build it. That's what I'm putting my stamp on.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's not that you're bringing someone in, he gets to be, oh, I decided to use a, uh, you know, he called out a a five inch round post, but I can buy this pressure treated full by floor post instead, so I chose to do that. No, that, that wasn't one of the options that I gave you. I gave you something that was historically relevant or whatever it might be. And that's what we're, that's the plan of action. So, so that's what I'm stamping. I'm, I'm giving them the instructions. They are following the instructions.
I just wanna make sure at the end that we can get insurance and it's not, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's exactly. And that comes, that comes from both the design plan, design specifications. I said both, so that, you know, design plan and design specifications. And then that carries through as to the, the workmanship then following those design plans and specifications. And that's, so that's, um, if you're looking at these items, that's what my construction control cost out, the construction administration side of it, which is item five on this thing. That's, that's me being there, understanding what their approach methods are and that they're following the specifications. I'm checking in to make sure that's happening throughout the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
All my questions are answered. I, do you have any questions for us?
I think Michelle's done a nice job of keeping me up to, up to speed as to what this was gonna be about and, uh, so, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good. You guys beat me down.
They really have hit the ground running. I've thrown a lot at them and they've done what it's up to.
So.
Yep. We have a lot to do.
Yeah. Sounds like it, that's for sure.
Yep. All right. Well, that's, that's what we'll do. Um, we'll, we're gonna take what you've given us for information, kinda digest it and then make a decision.
Thank you for making the trip up to come meet with us.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You said you live in,
I'm in Scotty.
Scotty, yeah. Skowloon, I thought that's it. Yep, that's a fair trip.
Yeah, it's not bad, I'm gonna be in, uh, gonna be in Prescott on Friday, so we got two bridges to go look at.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, that's nine in a land I'm supposed to be there, like, oh, you guys are killing me.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Very nice to meet you both.
Yep. Okay, what do we go next here?
Do you want to come out and go into your emergency select board meeting? Or do you wanna continue with your work session?
Is there anybody here that's here for the emergency select board meeting?
Is that five five, is that through?
Say that again.
Is that on the road? What?
No, this is, this is the financial, um, issues that we need to bring back to the town.
We.
We need to set up a special town meeting for that. Um, unfortunately, the meeting that's gonna, that was supposed to take place this weekend is not going to happen. So the board needs to sign a new warrant, we need to repost it, town meeting will be on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, cause I was, we were, yeah, all right. Discussion weight limit on the road, Sangamo Road.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna, okay, so on the twenty-fourth, you said?
Twenty-fourth will be a special town meeting to deal with.
That's a special town meeting, um, now, if you've got, if you've got a topic you wanna, you wanna have a discussion about, so weight limit on the road is what you're talking about. So what you need to do, um, our regularly scheduled select board meeting is next Wednesday. So we do a work session on one Wednesday and then a select board meeting on the next. And today is just a work session to deal with some of these things. And again, it's recorded and the public's welcome and, you know, we welcome input. Michelle has an agenda for our select board meeting. And while you're right here, if you wanna schedule it for next Wednesday and be on the agenda and have that conversation. The beauty to that is it gives us a little bit of time to look into your topic, so we can have an educated conversation about it. So if you'd like, she, if you wanna give her your information, she'll put you right on the agenda for next week's meeting.
Bryce Morse, M O R S, and it's a discussion about the East Sangamo Road.
Okay.
And the eighteen wheel gravel trucks that go over it from, I guess it's J D Reagan's bit now, I guess, well, it used to be Huey's bit.
Brown pit.
And that's it, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, I'll get you on.
Thank you so much.
You'll be on next week's meeting, she'll have you listed as a topic.
It was very interesting to hear this, to his very least.
Yeah, well, you were part of the, you were part of the committee and it was neat to have you.
I appreciate you guys, thanks for all your work, I know it's so easy.
It's not.
Thank you.
Thanks Bryce, I'll see you. Matt, did you wanna, did you wanna throw something in here? I know, um, I don't know if you guys knew, we're working on a, on a, Matt's working on, um, a Sangamo Fun Day at the park. You knew about that.
Yep.
Did you have any discussion you wanted to talk?
Um, not particularly, but, um, I'll just kinda give an overview where we're at with it. But, um, so September seventh is the day that we pick, um, ten o'clock start time. I think we're going until five as long as people are still there, cut out early if people are done for the day, but, um, so we're really, we brought in, um, or we're going to bring in live music at the gazebo, um, a bunch of yard games for kids, uh, bounce houses, uh, food. The friends of Sangamo Fire Department can cook food, um, we're gonna do touch a truck event with obviously some of our trucks as well as some on Dover and Guilford's trucks. And, or, yeah, Dover, Guilford and Dexter, I think responded to me so far. Um, and then recently, we just decided that we wanna add a car show to that as well. So that's gonna be all going on that day. Really, the whole purpose that we thought for it was just to get everybody together and build back on being a town together, community and friends and neighbors and do something together. And if it happens every year, great, I think it would be great, but, you know, you and I, Jeff, were talking the other day about the possibilities that that park and rec area actually has.
It blows my mind, I went down to look at the car show venue, part of it, Matt had invited me down, I've lived here my whole life. And I was amazed how little I knew about that park. I just, I was floored how nice that park is and.
It's, it's a, it's a huge thing that we should be utilizing and I, if it gets everybody to, to come together and on top of that, to get some people interested in helping the rec committee to keep it the way that it is, and that's all my real goal is, so.
Yep, and we're talking about a free event, so this isn't, this isn't a, you know, shake the tree for money deal at all. This is a hundred percent about community involvement and about people understanding what they have at that park. And it, we'll, we'll probably do a buy donation because it's Sangamo Fire Friends Off, it's gonna have a cost in food.
Yeah, so the food, we're gonna do by donation, uh, Maine Highlands, Credit Union, obviously, they are a big sponsor for, they've donated a bunch of money to help with, uh, getting the live music and they are also gonna provide close to a dozen personnel to help with all the yard games for the kids and all that, which is great. The friends of Sangamo Fire Department is gonna do the food and we'll just have a donation jar. And if somebody wants to pay a couple bucks for their burger, then great, if they don't, come out and have a good time and that's really just where we're trying to go with it. And just like to see people show up and have a good time and.
Work towards community.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe it gives somebody the idea of something different to do with that space down there too. I mean, it's so many possibilities with that area down there, so. But I'm looking forward to it, so hopefully people will show up.
I was just floored how beautiful it is down there, I'd, I've driven by it a thousand times, I don't take the time to stop.
Yeah, no, we've had, Bentley has had, um, T-ball down there. Um, recently, we bought kayaks for everybody, so we get in and it's perfect for the kids to be able to get into the kayak and, you know, between the dock and everything, it just works out really well. So they paddle around like crazy, lots of times in circles, but it's very nice, it's, it's just a fun time, they have a great time just playing in the water right there.
I think, you know, where we'll have the car show part of it, touch a truck stuff, food, um, there's stuff for adults to do, there's stuff for kids to do. I really would love to see people that haven't met you guys, that hopefully you guys can be there to come out and introduce themselves and.
I'll be there.
And, um.
We got bounce houses.
Bounce houses, yep, try to keep them in the far corner.
Keep the munchkins occupied.
Again, all they, uh, Maine Highlands has a ton of yard games, we got some actual like cornhole type setup for adults to play and so on and just, uh, I, I guess, um, Maine Highlands used to pay for some music in the gazebo years ago and, well, not years, but a few years ago and, you know, I'd just like to see that happen again. My gazebo is really, that's quite a little place right there, so.
Yeah, what's nice is, is electricity on the inside, right?
Yeah, there's outlets right inside of it.
Last year, we put a tree up in there and lit it for the first time, so.
I'm wicked excited about this, I, when, when we started having real turnout at our town meetings, it just, for me, it was a flashback to years ago. And this is just an effort to move in that direction.
I know, you gotta bring the community back together, it's just, it's a great way to start.
Yep, no, we have, you know, guys on the fire department helping with it, we have, uh, people on the rec committee helping with it, some, um, you know, community members and I think it'll all work out good. I, anybody that wants to help, hope, more power to them now.
We got through the, Gary was working on the banner and they got through that today.
Yep.
To, we're gonna put a banner out by the road.
Oh, yes.
Four by eight, a three by eight banner for, you know, for about a week before it happens and, um, all the trophies ordered for the car show.
I really liked the car show idea, I think that'll draw a crowd.
Well, yeah, we kept talking about it and it draws a lot of people, because a lot of people obviously have that interest in, but also if, you know, if you're gonna bring your kid down to play yard games for a few hours and you don't wanna sit there the whole time, it gives you something to do too.
Right.
You know, I, if Maine Highlands girls are gonna watch the kids do their games and stuff and then you can take a few minutes and check something else out. Hopefully people, I know there's a lot of people that are interested in the cars and bring them all in.
Yep, and I, you know, the last, the last couple of town meetings has been, it's been really good.
The whole thing's been really good.
Yep, I, I love the direction we're moving in. Okay, what do we got next on our pile of things to do?
Okay, so one of the things that you had discussed was committees. Well, because we're not gonna have our town meeting on Saturday, um, it's gonna be the twenty-fourth. So I don't know if you wanna just wait, put the signup sheets out on the twenty-fourth for committees. Um, we're looking at a road committee and a budget committee, was there another committee?
Road and budget were the two biggies.
Parks and Recs still have a committee, are they still active?
They do, there's only three people that are on it actively that I know of. And then there's a few that have voiced wanting to be a part of it, two, Rhonda and Jason Higgins. Rhonda, Jason Higgins and Lee Lorigan, I think are the three that are still in it. Um, I told them that I was happy to go on there and there's a couple other people, but we really just need to get back to meeting and.
Does that commit, that committee still exist?
It exists, yeah, they just.
So just don't have a scheduled meeting?
Don't have a scheduled meeting and part of that was because, um, obviously without a budget, there was no improvements to be made this year, so it wasn't a whole lot to meet about. Um, but we are gonna have to obviously get together and do some cleanup before this event, so we're, I'm gonna meet with them again Sunday and talk about that.
So if we do a committee signup sheet at the, at this next town meeting, um, budget committee was, was one that we need to talk about. We probably ought to put this rec committee.
I would put a sheet out, I know Rhonda spoke at the last town meeting saying, hey, you know, come help, but if there was a signup sheet where they could actually sign up and then she could get phone numbers and.
Right.
Reach out to them and schedule a meeting.
That's the point of this, it's just the organization part of it.
I can, I can create signup sheets with email and phone number and name.
Yeah.
For each one of the committees, budget, road and park. And then when we, when they, they check in, they can sign up if they want to there.
Can we have them in the town office for them to sign up?
Sure.
Yeah, do that. Cause I think some people, when they're in that line, they're just, they wanna get through that line and get in, they aren't so much focused, but somebody who wanted to would probably pay attention.
So post it for another week or two after the town meeting in the town office?
Well, yeah, I think so.
And make an announcement that it's there.
Yep.
So we're looking at, at the budget committee. Um, the rec committee. What other committees do we wanna?
Road.
Road.
Just those three?
We talked some with the forestry committee for, for the town lots, but at this point, I think we, I think we take the basic needs that we have and, and get through that, don't you? Those three?
I mean, yeah, I, I do like the forestry committee idea because I.
I do too.
I mean, right now is not a great time to cut, but from what I understand from people about that lot that we're having trouble getting to. That is very heavily wooded, you know, and.
And maybe we oughta look at that.
I did, I did find a bunch of information, um, the forestry plan, um, when I was digging around for something else at the town manager office in the old building. I brought those files with me back to the town office, so if you wanna stop in and see them sometime.
Yeah, I was actually gonna try to stop and have a talk with Toby Hall at some point, cause he's probably the most knowledgeable about them.
Yep.
All the lots, you know.
People like him, like John, there's, there's some people in town that I don't know anything about cotton wood and I don't wanna. But you need, we still need reference on what to do with it.
Right.
I could walk that lot and not be able to tell you what needed to be done.
From what I understand, if, if you selective cut it, it's gonna keep it healthier, correct?
Correct.
So it's.
In thirty years on that, that's a, to me, you should, you should be in a lot, Sangamo grows wood.
Right.
If it's managed right, it grows wood very well. It doesn't grow one species, it grows a whole abundance of species, but generally it grows wood very well.
It seems foolish to leave it alone completely and ignore it when, you know, it's a replenishing bank account in theory.
Right.
Cut it and let it do its thing again and then however many years revisit it again.
So we'll put the, put the forestry committee on if you think we should.
I, yeah.
See if we have any interest in it, start there, I guess.
Right.
If nobody's interested, then we'll have to figure out a different approach. Are there any other committees that have, that have fallen away over the years?
Not that I can see.
Yep, and the other one is the town hall committee, but that, that group of people is still there.
Yeah, we just have to reactivate them, that's all.
And the beauty to that committee was it was such a cross section of the town. And there was people with all different ideas and it was, you know, it's, that was a good committee. But when we get to that point, we, we can talk about that later. I don't think we need to deal with that right this second.
No, not, not right now, not until we kinda figure out what, what we need to do next. I mean, the public made their voice heard at town meeting that they want to pursue that. We put the bids out to get an engineer, so it's now up to the board to say, yes, we're gonna, okay, let's hire the engineer, have him get his prices. Come back to the town, give the town an option.
Right.
So.
But he won't, he'd stay in, tonight he, he doesn't want to do that until he is.
Until he is from, right, until he is from the committee.
All right, yeah.
So I guess.
I'll have to try and grasp it at all correctly, you know.
No, so I guess the next step in that process is to call the committee together.
Right.
And obviously, they're probably gonna hear this all on tape anyway, but call them together, set up a meeting so that we can get him involved and see if it's feasible for us to con- continue.
I think he's looking for the committee's involvement more for vision, so his vision is aligned with the vision of the town.
Right.
I think that's what he's looking for.
So.
And I don't think we need that until we're to that phase.
Bless him.
allergic to hay. And I covered it in hay.
So I guess, I guess my question would be, we've, we've dragged the building on, we've dragged the building on, we've dragged, so when do we start the next phase? Like, how soon do we start the next phase?
Right. My feeling is the bids need to go out sometime during the winter for a spring, for a spring date.
Right. So we want the committee to meet prior to that.
Prior to that, that's right.
And I would personally like to see us back on the first floor, December first of next year. I don't, I mean, unless he tells us that foundation project is gonna take twelve months to do it, well then, we'll rush them back and reassess, but I can't.
If we're.
I can't see anything that, if we put it out to bid this winter, we, it couldn't be done by next December first, you know.
Well, I myself have a lung condition, so I have to be careful if we are in that building with dust, like, I cannot sit closer to you, cause you're covered in hay.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna be able to breathe. So with that, as far as construction, you know.
No, we would have, we would have to complete the foundation, the roof and get the building squared up, the excavation would have to be done. And I think we'd have to be through the first floor.
Right.
And then once we're there, we're not in anybody's way, they're upstairs.
They're upstairs, okay.
That's how.
That's it, even if they, we decide right now we can afford that part of it or if we wanna go down that road or, I mean, I know we do eventually, but, you know.
Well, and there's other avenues that we need to investigate, um, there's always a bond bank, you know.
Right.
Those are long-term bonds, I'm not sure how bonds work, I'd have to be explained, someone would have to talk to me about them. But I know that, like, Guilford has done them for the road projects. So. So. Maybe that's an option, but.
It's just basically a loan that's being guaranteed by the people. When you put a bond through the, the guaranteeing loan.
Yeah.
The other thing that. We need a little bit of time. Is pushing the grant end of it as hard as we can. You know, to hear it from the engineer and then to hear it from Leslie in the committee. You know, this nonprofit, and Jody mentioned it too, she, she was, she thought if we did anything that. Um. You know, that was the route to take because it opens up so much more.
Which goes back, which goes back to Patrick's plan of making that building a five oh one three C.
Right. I know as we proceeded as a committee. You bring up that word and, and there was total resistance.
Uh-huh.
And. I'm guessing that hasn't changed.
Right.
Um. But if, that being said, if we. If we had a historical society was actually a nonprofit and we was able to. I never knew you could combine the two.
Me either.
I'd piggyback on them for the grant money. We need to really figure out, and I don't know if it's us that look at it. Um. We really need to dig hard for grant money. Because, you know, for the citizens of Sanville to fund a full renovation of that building.
It's too much?
It's too much. We all know it. Could we renovate it to the point where we can move back in and have a serviceable municipal office there? Absolutely, I think we can do it for the money we've. Allocated. One of his concerns, which was one of mine as well, is. You don't wanna spend four hundred thousand dollars to move back in it and then decide later you wanna renovate it. To historical standard and undo what you spent. Hundred to two thousand dollars to do so that you could use it.
Yes, the basement and the first floor need to be set up for the long-term end game, even if we don't do it, it should be set up for it.
Right. And I think everybody was on board with, with. The foundation, the drainage, the, the roof, the, the structural stuff and. Renovating the first floor.
Well, the thing is, when we talked to Nick, I didn't realize what role the dirt beside it, beside the foundation played.
Oh, yeah.
I did, I did not realize, you know, the type of soil is affecting the foundation.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, you watch it tip in and of course the dirt's gonna follow it, but I hadn't, did not think of the other avenues.
You walked around that basement with us.
Uh-huh.
And you saw where the walls are pushed.
Yeah.
Now go outside and walk around the outside and right where they're pushed is pockets where the water sets. You can't escape. And it's got hydraulic pressure when it freezes and that's what happened.
Yeah.
And you can see it plain as day, when you go down and look at the walls and then you go outside and walk around the outside of it.
What you did that night and you.
Clear as a bell.
You can see him, absolutely. But I never, I was thinking water, but didn't think about the dirt itself, the types of dirt.
Right.
That are under there.
Yep.
So that makes, that makes more sense to me.
So how did your meeting go the other day with that other company?
It, oh, I know what you're talking about, I, you lost me there for a minute. That's just, just an application process, just, just looking for money, that's all.
Okay.
And that's what we did. We said, hey, look at us, we want some.
It'll go anywhere, but it might.
I, I wrote a, I wrote a email online paper and Michelle made it look pretty and sent it along. Basically just asking to consider us for grant money for the building. So that's where we're at at that point.
So if you guys end up getting super invested in the. Grant part of it. Um, and if you find out whether or not the historical society is a five oh one three C nonprofit. Um, cause the friends of is, so I did a lot of. Grant writing for the fire department and stuff through that and. I have a grant writer that I used that's very, very knowledgeable about this kinda stuff, and if you. Jump into that, she would, um, show her, that's what she does and, um, she probably. I don't know how much, like she usually, most of the grants, federal stuff that she wrote for us. The only thing that she got paid is if you were awarded a grant, there's like three percent if you were awarded a grant or something along.
Is that Elsina?
Yeah, yeah, but she did a lot for us because of the situation that we were in and she, she did it all. For free either way, um, for us, just because she felt bad in the situation that we were in, but she's really good, she. So. Might be a, a person to reach out to.
It's on a different direction, but it just dawned on me. Are we gonna have any of that new gear here by the time we have that weekend?
Should, yeah, I'm guessing within a couple weeks I should have.
I mean, maybe not let people touch it, but it might be good to.
Yeah, no.
Show some of it off.
It'll be right here, same with, you know, we would touch a truck is, the doors are all open and everything's there to be looked at, there'd be guys, a couple firefighters to show people around and stuff, but. That will all be.
Great.
On display, so.
I'm sure people would like to see that.
Yep.
Hmm.
So, but yeah, she, she's been a huge help with, even if it wasn't writing a grant, just pointing me in the right direction of where the possibilities are. Because she knows where every grant for every different, you know, avenue is and there's probably. Places that we don't even know give out money for certain things that she could point you in the direction of.
Hmm, and she gets paid if you're awarded a grant?
That's how she did it as far as our FEMA grants, um, I don't, it may be different, different. Entities, I don't know exactly, but just, just something to keep.
Do you have contact information for her? You do. Cool. Alright, what's next?
Well, so I've been working on your financial for the general government. And there's so many ways I could do this. With the payroll, with everything, using the two thousand twenty-three approved budget.
Mm-hmm.
When we get all done. I ever have tried to project out as far as keeping the office open with that rate, rate of pay now. We are going to come up short. By, hold on. Nine thousand six hundred and seven dollars in the overall. Account.
And that includes Rob and Peter to PayPal to get to the bottom line.
It does, and it doesn't give you any room to hire the town manager.
Right.
So, and that's the other piece that we really need to kind of discuss. Next is. What are we, what are we gonna do? What, we've got, I haven't received any more, um, applications. For town manager other than the one that came in the other day. Um. Deadline is Friday for any applications.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure, but the next step for that is.
I think the next step is we gotta look at what we've got for applications. While we're doing that, we gotta figure out how long we pay them. Which is what this meeting was originally about, the one that.
Right, the one Saturday was supposed to be that, and unfortunately because I left a word in that I shouldn't have. Is why we have to change the meeting.
That's right, I understood that.
So, um.
So what we need. To make this administrative budget work. We need to know if we hired somebody three weeks from right now. What they're gonna be paid, what their benefits are gonna cost. And what it costs to complete the year.
Right, um. We're down to four more payments for health insurance. So you're looking at about five thousand dollars there. I did, and I didn't bring one tonight, I just brought this. Um, I haven't done the breakdown if we use the two thousand twenty-four proposed budget. That I can do tomorrow when I get back to the office, um.
So what was the number on the insurance for the balance of the year?
It'll be about five thousand dollars to add a new person to the budget.
And there's a big if, do we hire somebody for thirty or thirty-two hours, forty hours, you know, these are all things. Each candidate has a different idea.
Exactly.
Maybe I didn't think of it, but it's sitting right at home.
Um, trying to get to my. Alright, well, that's not quite sure. Yeah, so it's four thousand, about forty-five hundred dollars per person for now to get to the end of the year. Cause we have something up to win in December. There's income protection, um, that's paid by the town, that's really small as far as a premium. So you'd be well under a hundred dollars for that for a new person. But you've also got to figure in your social security and your Medicare match to whatever you hire them for. I know the interim town managers were getting thirty dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm.
I believe Patrick was getting more than that. His gross was like, um, a thousand fifteen, a, a thousand one hundred fifteen.
And he was full-time?
And he was full-time.
Forty hours.
But he was also one that was capable of being both a road commissioner and a town manager.
Right.
Exactly.
Wearing two hats.
Right.
And what was his gross?
His was one thousand one hundred and fifteen. And Jeff was working ten to fifteen hours a week and his gross was four hundred and fifty a week.
And he had fifteen hours a week, isn't he?
Ten to fifteen, yeah. And his was thirty dollars an hour.
What was Patrick's based on? Do you, you don't, you don't know?
I don't know, I'm almost saying the same thing.
Twenty-seven point eight seven.
Twenty-seven point eight seven.
Patrick is a pretty good buy.
And both of them do roads.
Right.
You did say one thousand one hundred and fifteen gross, right?
Yeah.
For forty hours.
Forty hours. Yeah, twenty-seven eighty-seven.
Do you think we can hire somebody for twenty-seven dollars an hour? That can do all of those things?
I don't know.
I think it would be hard pressed.
I also think that at the beginning. Even if they can't do it. We need to hire them as an interim road commissioner until we find a road commissioner, so that we can do. Something.
Some of the projects, yeah.
Right.
So like if you're looking at your road budget right now. No, you guys don't own this one, this is, I ran this just before I come up. So I'll pass it over to you, this is, this is your balance to your different accounts, so if you come across.
Don't get too close to Michelle.
This one, so.
So basically we got thirty-nine for summer maintenance and. Twenty-eight for paving.
Yep.
So I don't even know what you would hire a road, you know, road commissioner.
Where are we at at grading? Where's grading?
Should be on your summer rooms list.
Almost got it twice colored, all supplies, grading supplies.
Yeah, it's a child that passes a disaster zone.
Twenty thousand, doesn't say we spent anything on grading.
Which we have.
We haven't received a bill from Lawson.
Nope. Not that I know of.
Okay, that, that's, that brings up another, cause Chris said to me the other day that he hasn't sent a bill from this spring. On grading.
Chris hasn't, no, Chris hasn't, I haven't seen anything on grading.
Pretty hard to run a budget when you don't have a bill to pay.
So, I, can we put it in the contracts? I'm, I'm having her write contracts for everything.
Right.
Right.
We must receive a bill in thirty days if you wanna get paid, something.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, yes, because right now, we're, we're trying to do, we'd like to do a few projects before the end of the year and.
Well, we don't know where we're at.
Right.
Well, and we're gonna be coming up on budget time, you know, you're looking at, at looking at budgets probably November.
Right.
So that we can be ready for December thirty-first closing the books.
Right, we don't know what we spent this spring grading roads. Pretty hard to project next year.
I don't even have a clue where we stand with anything at this point, cause I don't have an audit.
Hmm. So. Is the grading the only thing we don't have, have, um?
As far as I know.
A bill for?
Yep, that's the only thing I can think of.
Can we follow up on that? Talk to Steve, talk to Chris and see if we could get a bill?
I, I will double check, um.
I had talked to Scott, he, I, I think he said he's got like five hundred bucks maybe.
Okay.
But. He was kinda holding it because of budget issues, he was just, it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah.
You know, but the.
Still be nice to know where we're at.
Right. Yep.
Hmm.
So the original budget was a hundred and four. And we've spent sixty-five. I wonder what, what we spent sixty-five on. Right, am I reading that right?
Yep, you're reading it right.
Cause it, it's just.
Yeah, cause this is your final, this is your balance right here.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So every time, like you see number seventy, that's here and then this is the breakdown.
The breakdown of it.
Of seventy-seven.
Right.
Okay. That's, uh, uh, what, what have we done to spend that?
Well, this is your budget, but you're what you spend's over here.
Oh, yeah. Cause all of that work we had done. Unless all, a bunch of that work that we had done last fall didn't get paid till after the first of the year, right?
Should've been paid, should've been paid by December thirty-first, cause that's what it looks like.
So all those. I just don't know, I don't know where we've spent it, I don't, I don't. It doesn't seem to me that. Anything's been, I mean, there's been things done, but not that kinda done.
Big projects.
Not, not sixty-five done. You know. Especially when we ain't even got a bill for.
For grading.
Grading.
So let me pull those accounts, I can pull each individual account and it will show the vendor that we paid. So we can pull, I can pull that stuff out, so you can look it over.
That'd be really good.
Okay.
Hmm. Cause we've got some things to address, hmm.
Yeah, and. Course I don't go out my road very often, but the section road that's been supposed to be redone for the last seven years, right. In the center of my lower field.
Mm-hmm.
In the road, there's a rock that's up there about this high. And I got an idea that's a monster under there, cause it don't wiggle, you know, and. I don't think Chris is gonna plow over that this winter.
They have.
You know. They said they broke a, uh, cut an edge on the grader on that this spring, graded it, but I mean, I would've thought in the spring you could see it, but.
Hmm. So what we started talking about was, was. The town manager, we're talking about budget to. Bring to the town meeting so that we can fill this position for town manager and our road commissioner.
Right.
Um. So. So we're gonna have to come up with a plan of attack for interviews. But we, but we need to cross this dollars and cents bridge first before we can start talking to people about a job.
Yeah.
Well, we could do interviews. I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing an interview, cause maybe we have one that only wants seventeen dollars an hour. Yeah, I probably highly doubt it, but you know.
So one, one that we've had, has been interviewed by the old board.
Yes.
Um, and then you have two new ones.
Yes.
So you have three locals that I'm aware of.
And we made the decision, we really wanna pull from our community or close to our community
Yeah.
for this position. I think we're all on the same page there.
Yes.
Which gives us right now, as of now, three candidates to talk about. I was part of the interview with the one that's been interviewed and he was, he was um interested in the thirty or thirty-two hour program. And
This is good.
He indicated he had a lot of budget experience and absolutely no road experience whatsoever. Other than budgeting for it. That was my take in my conversation with him. So if, if we do that, we still need to deal with the road commissioner part of it.
Right.
Okay, so I should be looking at trying to pull figures together for you between the summer road budget and the winter road budget for a road commissioner.
Right.
And then also a plan or try to figure out if we were to put the old twenty twenty-four budget back in place. What we could pay for a town manager.
Right. Cause that may determine if we're looking for a part-time or a full-time person.
Right.
And I'm not opposed using two people to achieve a forty-hour job and getting a better job. Example, if we can hire somebody that can, that can do everything about the roads, do it in thirty hours and do it efficiently. And somebody that can come in for ten hours a week and handle the road commissioner part of it.
Right.
You're right back at a forty-hour salary, but you're getting a lot better job. And obviously the ten-hour-a-week guy isn't gonna want insurance or any of that stuff.
Correct.
We have to work thirty-two hours to be able to qualify for
Right.
So the
Just looking at bang for the buck.
Right.
You know, if, if you hire somebody that has no road experience for forty hours a week. And you're still leaving that, that road thing you gotta deal with.
Right. When eventually we'll get back to that will be the number one complaint in town again. I mean, right now it's
I think it probably still is.
Right now, there, there isn't really any complaints right.
I've heard a few if you, if you need some.
There, there has been some. I mean, I, I, I seem to get some every day, but to me, to me, a complaint is when somebody's angry.
Right.
I haven't had anybody
Nope, you neither.
Angry.
Yeah, had a lot of suggestions though.
Yeah.
You have um probably s- I think there's six copies of some complaints that I put in your packet today. Um, one of them, I believe is about a road sign which we've already ordered. It just hasn't got here yet.
Which one is that? The the one on the burrows?
No, right on your, right to your, your, and it's right over the whole pile of complaints.
Oh, this is all the complaints.
That's all the complaints. And she just simply wanted to know where her sign was. It was a hidden driveway sign, but that's unordered and it hasn't come in yet.
Okay, yeah. Then we, we dealt with this in our last selectmen's meeting. We made the decision to order it.
Yep, I'm just waiting for the show up.
Casper Zach.
There you go.
Ms. Casper Zach, we are on it.
I do believe there are two complaints about the Wheeler um on the east angle road. I think we had two right back to back one day.
Which one of them is his mother, I believe. The one that just came in and the other one is the neighbor.
So other than that, I mean.
Oh, and I, and I, I don't think there was ever a um I don't, I don't think they were ever banned in that road. That was never, I mean, we'd have put signs up if that was the but I think it was just always a, maybe we should talk to Rob, cause I'm pretty sure Rob had kind of a he just didn't use that end of the road and
Right.
everybody from Brown Pit that way kinda got used to not seeing that, you know?
Where's the two ninety-nine North Dexter?
It's gotta be right here.
That is
Two ninety-nine North Dexter.
So you have the cl- the Clark houses, the real nice houses, George's Place, there's a driveway like a road. I'm just a little ways further, there's a, a white house and a huge field.
Gotcha.
And that's where we've had a lot of complaints.
Okay, so it was the
Um, Jean Weeks.
Jean Weeks property.
Yep.
And she's in Florida.
Yep, and we've had a lot of complaints on that.
That isn't that bad, is it?
Because all of a sudden we've got a whole bunch of campers there. And people are living out of the campers, but they're concerned about trash that's being blown around. Um, sewage, wha- what is being used to dispose of the sewage and the water.
Yep, I looked at buying that lot. There's, I think there's two septic on that lot.
Yep, so um Lance has gone out and he doesn't see any reason, any problem with it at this point.
Yeah.
But
Cause there's a little cabin there that they were living in that's up to code. Yeah, on the
Alice House?
Yeah, and that was up to code as far as I know.
So, um, but that's, that's the location.
Okay, yeah. Two complaints on the same place.
Yeah, and I actually had one person message me through um Facebook Messenger concerning the
Now, this complaint on the washout near the end of, of the Clark driveway on the gray road, that's gonna be up on the hill.
If you go, do you know where Butch's
Yeah, a lot is.
Just after that, it creeps up. There's a driveway that curves right down hard and it wa- it ran and then some of them had rains right down that driveway. And there is no ditching on that side of the road.
Is it from a Dick Clark's house?
I, I don't know.
Nice houses that's
Yes, yeah, and then, so it kinda ran out into the road, traveled with the road a little ways and then went across the road and it is it's probably uh this wide, four or five inches deep, you know, like
Washboard.
Yeah, I was kinda in hopes that we could just get Scott to go up there at some point with his skid steer and just
Yeah.
But
Was it just from a big rain event that caused it or?
Yeah, well, multiple big rain events, you know, but not being ditched on that side's the biggest thing, you know?
I mean, to go up and fix it and then have it happen next week would suck.
Well, yes, but we have thirty-nine thousand dollars and I we have to prioritize.
Right, right, that's all.
I, yeah. Maybe a shovel it is.
So I also sent you um, I don't know if you got it, cause I had your wrong email.
I, I still haven't got any emails on that.
You haven't? I resent everything though with, with your new email address.
Unless, unless my phone ain't dinging and I just ain't seeing it here.
But we had this um proposal come, when I went to look for IT services for our new computers that we received. Um, nothing.
Zero.
I'm gonna have to send you a test just to see if you can get something, cause I forwarded all this stuff I sent to everybody, dicking when you're not getting nothing. So Eagle, when I went to check for IT services, I went to MMA's website. And they have Eagle Network Solutions and a WG Technologies.
I read all that, did you say?
Right, so Eagle has sent us a proposal. Um, they're willing to come out and meet with anybody to show them, explain them, what they do, how they do it. Um, so what I can tell, if I'm figuring it right, it costs us sixty-four hundred dollars a year to have them be IT services. Unlimited phone calls. Um, if they had to come on site, they're only an hour and a half away. In Herman, Herman Holden. Somewhere in that area. I sent this over to Melissa and had her look at this to see if we were even in the right area for me, but the, what do we get?
Sculptor, what we get.
Yep, and she gave it her blessing.
Good.
Um, yes, 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 is my answer from her. So I have not heard anything else from anybody um concerning a proposal, touch base with me, nothing.
That's about half what I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah. It is a whole lot less than what we had been pointed before.
So you said sixty-four hundred dollars for unlimited phone.
Yeah, they could, they could patch in.
Now, if they have to come out here, how many times do they come out in that? Or do they come out at all? Do we have to pay above and beyond?
Usually IT people do it right from remote, is right.
Um, they will come out, um.
Well, I mean, if we had a computer crash and they needed to come out and set it right up.
Right.
Do we get four of those a year or zero of those a year, you know?
There is. Okay, so per hour charges um for services not covered by the agreement is a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. And to get them started, to get all the computers that we have in the office set up and going is like a thousand dollars. And they'll set all three of them up, have everything running for us, take care of the licensing for all the different
That sounds very reasonable to me. It sounds about half what I thought it was gonna be.
Sounds like they made a mistake and we probably should say yes.
The guy is very nice to deal with. Um, I've talked to him a couple different times about getting the, the plan here. He sent an email, let me, let me come up and talk to you. So if we want him to come do a presentation, I'll call him next and have him come at the next board meeting next week.
I think this is a sooner than later thing. We have computers that don't work.
Right.
We have brand-new computers sitting there collecting dust. Budget-wise, where does that put us? Cause that comes from administrative.
That's where we get snagged at, because without that budget from twenty twenty-four. Or if they approve the ten thousand dollars that's in the warrant, the very last article. That would get us going. If they didn't approve to go back and fix the general government account, but it authorized us for the ten thousand, that would get us up and going.
And this is one of those sooner than later things.
Yeah. But then again, we still could meet with him ahead of time, so we know as soon as we do or do not get the budget increased then.
Right, then we can go from there.
Right.
So I could have him come on Wednesday. You have, our meeting is on that Saturday.
Yep.
So if everything goes through town meeting, I can call them Monday morning and we can start the process. So I'll call him and have him come up on Wednesday night. Okay.
That'll work. I like that. That was good news.
Yes, I was, I was very excited. Um, if, like I said, I'll double check and I'll call Melissa just to confirm that we're all on the same page.
And it's hard for us to make a decision on something we don't understand.
Right, exactly, and
Just somebody like her to describe to us what we're looking for.
And Caleb is very good about downing it down, even, even I understood some of the stuff.
Alright.
So, no, he was, he was good. Um, in your packet, I did actually find another piece that goes to the building. Um, that I copied for you. It goes back to October of twenty nineteen. So that's just to add to your packet of information.
I almost feel like I've seen this before.
That's the first time I had seen it. So I didn't know if you guys had it in your pack, but
No, I think I've seen this
Have you seen it before? Okay.
Long time ago.
Um, I have been over, like I said, um, in the old building. I found a lot of stuff. I've also been able to look and assess what is there that needs to be thrown away. Or disposed of somehow. Um, I don't know if, if we're gonna be going with an engineer and getting it all rolling, we probably need to get some of that stuff out. So I don't know where you stand, like
Storage. Storage and disposal.
What's the next step? I mean
Shredding records that we don't need.
Sammy and I can go in there and we can get into some of the records um and start destroying stuff.
The stuff that's supposed to be destroyed.
Yep. I mean, you've got stuff that actually is back to nineteen seventy-eight in some cases that really doesn't even have much. I, I don't know why we have it, in all honesty. Cause we don't wanna be fiddling around in there in October, cause it's gonna be mighty cold.
Oh, you'll be right, yes, my sweet.
Keep my mittens on, exactly. So we can do that whenever, whenever the board wants us to start doing that. Um, unfortunately true, the, the matter is, you know, do we get paid or do you want to enact like the comp time thing? That's, comp time is not in your personnel policy from what you can tell. Um, I thought it might be something like, I do not care about me, but I thought maybe Sammy would like to have some extra time if we worked it off that way.
Now, as far as destroying records, I mean, can we just buy a paper shredder and shred them or do you have to have somebody professionally do it? How do you do that?
Um, we have a little
We got Matt Burn.
We can have Matt burn them. You bring a bear. There you go.
Sunday practice in the parking lot.
As long As long as we know that they are destroyed. Um, we have a small shredder. We can bring the shredder over and run it. Although it might require power. I don't think it's battery operated. I think it's plugged in.
You'd always come in here.
That could be an issue.
Could you bring any of it in here and plug the shredder in?
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, you're close enough.
Yeah, ex- yeah.
Or just a hundred-foot extension cord through a window.
Either way, you got power, do you?
Yep, there you go. That would work.
Like, anything that you need. If you need an extension cord setup, just let me know and I'll run it over for you, you know?
Well, and to mention too, that Matt and the crew, the fire department has always been anytime I call, they make it happen. So this week elections decided that we're gonna do a surprise. Um, we're gonna test your equipment. My equipment was in the old building. And I had like an hour to, to get it moved. Called Matt, Matt made it happen, came over, lugged it down, got it all set up, was tested, passed all our tests. We're good to go for election. So just appreciate what he does.
Anything you need, I know most of the guys are the same as me, but anything you need, if you need help lugging stuff or whatever.
Yep, he's always been there.
So the taking care of the old records and ge- and getting through I think the first decision we need to make is the stuff we need to keep, where are we putting it? How are we dealing with it? Are we getting a pod? Are we starting in the town garage while this building's under construction? We need to make some of those decisions.
We do.
And then the stuff that we're not toeing along with us that needs to be destroyed, we need to make that decision too.
Right.
Who determines that and, and who destroys them and?
Well, I have the disposition of records, which is set up by the state archives and I've downloaded the newest version. So I printed it off and that will tell you exactly. Um, payroll records, if somebody dies, you have to keep them for sixty years. If you if an employee leaves, it's seven years. It tells you everything that you need to do. From jail records to school records to whatever. So I do have that. Um, but as far as what are we gonna be doing in the office for keeping stuff? Um, I keep getting back into the old records. If we do put it in the, if we do do one of the pods you had talked about before. How cumbersome is that? Like, what is inside the pod for us to put the stuff on? Are they in books, boxes? Do you know?
They're, they're an empty square box.
Okay, so we need to have like some shelves?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Or storage boxes and stacked boxes and
So that we can find, like, the biggest thing we keep getting requests for, obviously a birth, death and marriage. So those have to be easily accessible for us. So those have to be easily accessible for us.
Right. I like these records you're gonna keep for seven or sixty years or whatever, those can be put in boxes and stacked in the back.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, that's just an idea, you know, if we get into construction on this building, we've gotta deal with our. With our storage situation.
Right.
And that may not be the right answer, that was just something I had thought of is is a. A unit that we could set in front of the door, load it and then move it over and put it in. Put a lock on the door to if and put it in our large building.
Yep, I think that makes more sense.
I think it's our only option. I mean, how many heated storage places are around here?
Not many.
Not many. And the cost on that would be huge. The only downfall we have there is the only bay that's heated. Is the bay that notes use now. And it's the work bay, which doesn't really matter, I guess, but it's the smallest bay at all then, so we gotta take that into. Consideration that we probably only have. I mean, I don't even know how.
And you can get those in multiple units. I mean, you can get them four by eight, by six feet tall. And you could get to a third one. And put them against the back wall and separate your records accordingly. The beauty to them is, um. You know, they're they're nice and tight, they lock, it's secure storage. And you set it in front of the door and you load it and then you take it over and set it where it goes and it's done. You don't handle the stuff two or three times.
Right.
That was what was attractive to me about that. That option.
Absolutely, even if it's not a heated bay, even if it is just in our building. I mean, it's not heated now.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, I don't know how important it is for it to be heated. But locked up and secure is the biggest.
Bottom line is, even if it's cold storage, if there's no moisture, there's no mold. So, you know, if it's dry, I mean, it's paper goods, it should be fine.
Right.
But the beauty to that, if somebody breaks into our building, our records are still in a steel container with a lock on the door. And to get that fire in, no matter where you put them, they can get that fire in.
Right.
You know, so I I just, I view it as number one, simple, cost effective and time effective for. Transporting everything, not moving it two or three times.
Right.
But I also view it as very secure. I would feel better with them locked like that.
Yep.
And there's, you know, there's options, you can, you can rent them, you can buy them, you can do whatever. I think until this building thing is is finished, then we're looking at something like that.
Right, we're gonna have to move and do something.
I'm not as comfortable taking them to like down the street to Marty's storage unit, putting them in a storage unit. I just. I don't, I think you're asking for trouble and.
Well, and right there is accessible for her.
Right.
Travel on the ways kinda stinks. I mean, I know Marty's isn't that far, but.
Right, but it's just, I I think it's on our property, it's us to manage it. It's kind of got a double lock system on it once it's in that building. You know, the building's locked.
Yep.
The box is locked. I feel secure with that.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Um, so we just need to figure out pricing and again. If it's gonna fit in our budget.
If it's in our budget, if we're gonna buy, we're gonna rent, we're gonna put it what size we need.
Where do we even start calling? Do you have any idea where to be looking for?
So there's one company, it's called Pods, P O D S. I don't know if they service this area or not, that's what I found online when I was looking around for solutions.
Okay.
Um, the auto auction I go to, um, they have brand new containers. They've got one bay, three bay and four bay. So the four bay is a forty footer with ten, ten foot cubicles with doors on the sides of each one.
Oh, no kidding?
Or.
Is that just like a Conex?
It's a hyped up version of that and they're new.
Yeah.
Their stores get rubber gaskets on the doors and they'll, you can leave them right outside. The water, water resistant. That's an option.
Would the yappies around?
No, I'd I'd rather.
I'd rather be in the building, I think, my, just my gut feeling.
Me too. But one of those units, you know, if if we bought one of those or if we if we rented rented them. I just, I I agree, I think it's the only option we have to to do it.
So now we just need pricing.
Right, cause we can't put it in our rented space, there's no room.
You should call Main Trailer.
Main Trailer, okay.
Cause I I think they do a pod type thing, plus they also do Conex boxes, like you can buy good used, like an eight by eight by. Twenty Conex box for like twenty five hundred bucks. From them.
Right, and that's that's kinda what I'm looking at is, you know, if we did that. You drop it here, you put everything in it, then you move it over there and it's done.
Yep.
When this project's all done, you pick it up and bring it back over here and put stuff away. Otherwise, you're gonna, you're gonna load the stuff all in your van or in a truck or whatever. And then you're gonna move it to here and then you're gonna move it over there and you're gonna unload it.
You can move it again.
And it's just secured by a passage door and then it's open to the bubbly.
Right.
And you got people going in and out of there. I just, I like the idea of the logbooks.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll investigate, see what I can do with that. Um. Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot.
That's good.
Should I eat by game?
Right, alright, I should have done that. I left my wi- I left my wife to finish loading the last hundred bales and figure out how to cover it. That's what she was texting me, where's the tarp?
I don't know if it's raining now, but it was booming when I showed up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, so to get back where we started earlier. Why did we give per, you don't know why, but I, so I, I. Jason Higgins called today, they've been taking wood chips. There was a pile outside of the fenced in area where the little play area is.
Yeah.
Park. That was for another project. And basically, it was just Jason and Peter Willie. Having the same time to get together, cause Peter was gonna bring his tractor down and.
Yeah.
Get it done. Well, I guess Jeff gave people permission to take the chips that were donated to our park.
I wasn't aware of that.
I've seen two separate trucks loading truckloads of chips there, but I don't know who they were.
One of them's right up here, but I mean, if they get permission, it's just past Kimball's on the right. It's the next house, it's like a bunch of trees. Well, if you, so it's the next, next one from Honeywell Ave. And there's, I mean, there's quite a file there right over by.
So the chips left, are they gone?
I, I.
Think they're all gone?
Yeah, pretty much all gone.
Wow. And I'm taking it somebody's upset about that.
Jason's not happy, I mean.
Yeah.
I would have thought that the first call would have been on Jeff's park to the.
To the people that.
Rec board to find out if there was, that was gonna be used for something, you know?
What do we do with that?
I don't know.
I don't, because the donation came from Happywood Products.
It did.
And the board, um, of course, it was said that the board should have approved the donation. Which didn't get done. Um, but then when they get done filling the playground area, it was this huge pile. And I can't remember who called. We had several calls that we gave Jeff, you know. Would, can these people take the chips? Finally, Jeff said, yeah, just have them go get them, cause it's just a pile there.
So they were still getting them as of today.
Yeah, maybe we oughta put a cease and desist on that. If we know who's taking them or or put a note on them that that. They're all free for the taking, so to speak.
Right.
Can't really blame the people if they had permission to do it.
No, I mean, if they get permission, I'm. We can't ask them to bring it back at that point.
Right.
Right.
So I'm taking it Jason's got projects he can't finish, cause he doesn't.
Well, I mean, he had.
Bad things to do with them.
Yes, right.
If we know who the people are, maybe we should just talk to them, one of us, somebody, Michelle.
Yep.
I know one that called and asked, but I don't know if he ever went and got the chips, because after I talked to him. He's like, he he never showed up to take them, so I don't know if he actually ended up going to take them or not, and that's that, um. Chris Palmer, I think is his name.
Do you know where he lives?
He's up, he's on twenty three. I don't know the number, seventy three maybe?
Seventy three, I would think would be pretty close to.
Seventy three, somewhere handy to the bottom of the hill, just past the ball field.
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, I'm not sure where.
Middle of the hill is about a hundred maybe, so.
I don't know.
We need to figure out how to gonna stop taking what's left and then figure out what to do with it beyond that.
Right.
I mean, again, if we had the rec committee put back together, we'd have a little more control over this.
Well, I don't think there was a whole lot of communication between our office and. And the rec department.
Right, but there needs to be.
Yep, there does.
I think that's kinda been one of Jason's biggest concerns over the last couple of years is just that. There was air of communication and then.
Yeah, there was, um. Like for the town office to know what was going on at the park, there was some real gaps there. So maybe we can, going forward, you know, have Jason come in and meet at the budget committee.
There's a lot of revamping to do there.
Yeah.
The thing is, we don't wanna. We don't want them to lose interest in what they're doing either, and I think they had it, to a degree, lost interest.
Yep.
And we don't want that.
Exactly.
No, I mean, ten years ago, they were doing. The biggest that made the whole thing was that soccer field. You know, that was a huge, huge change and. And, uh, yeah, I mean, Jason was the head of that, basically.
Yeah, no, we don't want him to lose interest, I'm sure.
No.
Well, then like, who is, um, like purchase orders, this is something that wasn't done before, but Jeff said it needed to be done that way. So I've got a purchase order on my computer, so if they come in. Tell me what they need, give me the price and get it forward, whatever, I can attach a purchase order and then bring it to you guys for your blessing.
Yeah, that's, that's hard.
But give a blessing every time they.
It makes it really hard, especially like on my end, like to get the oil and stuff, it's like, it's already budgeted. It's already been approved.
Right.
But every single thing still has to get a purchase order, which is, it's tough.
But does it really have to?
I don't know, I have not seen anything in writing, but that doesn't mean it's there.
I mean, purchase orders are okay, are great for her.
To keep track.
If you call and say, I need a PO for this, she can write it down and then when the bill comes in, she knows right where to put it, there's no messing around.
And I'm I'm cool, like, I a hundred percent understand that, like, call her up, Michelle, hey, I'm getting. This under repair line of my budget, do you have a PO number for me? Yep, let's go with this one. I tell them, can you attach PO to it? Perfect, she gets it, it's all lined up. As long as budget, if it's not budgeted, then definitely it comes here, but. It just seems foolish to me.
Well, I struggled the way, the the way that Jeff wanted me to do it, I was struggling with, because. He wanted us to sign the PO, not just track, like. If Matt and I talked and I know you're going after oil and, okay, put this PO on it, good to go. But that's not what Jeff really wanted me to do. He wanted a PO with my signature, you have a copy, it goes to the, to the vendor. And then it comes back through and then I see it.
So the big question is.
So it was, it was kinda cumbersome.
Big question is, what does the law say we have to do? That's the question. How we did it before doesn't really matter.
A simple answer for that is, did he, did he give a contractor a PO when he had them do work?
I don't think so.
Then. It's the same thing.
I think we just need to know what the law says on it. I would be in favor of, of. Like with Matt, if he's got a budget for truck repair. He knows what he's got to spend.
Yeah, I mean, we.
That's the biggest thing, it's like, like Michelle and I, like, when I go to Michelle and say, hey. You know, we're close to halfway through the year, can you print me out where I stand with everything? So I track it, you know, if I see. This line is getting too low, you know, obviously things change, but, so if that stuff is budgeted already and you're following that budget.
That's what a budget's for.
Right, that's exactly what a budget's for. You already know, you know, I've already budgeted for oil change and budgeted for this, a budgeted for that. You know, so it all falls into that, it just seems foolish to. To do, approve it. It's like approving it three times, like going through the budget committee, approving it, towns voting on it, approving it.
By a chief approves it. Then Michelle gets to write a PO.
And it's like, it seems like so much more work than you really need.
And I understand the reasoning behind it, so you don't just have. Somebody going to the store and saying, well, charge it to such and such.
Right.
And then it comes through the office, I'm like, the hell does this go to? You know what I mean?
But if we, if we always use that PO numbers, without having them have to approve everything, you and I can use a PO.
Right.
If I'm gonna purchase something, you give me a PO so you know when it comes to you. If it doesn't have a number on it, something's weird.
Right.
Right, and it gives, it just gives another set of eyes on it. Just to say, you know, maybe we oughta look at this.
Well, and right now, we don't have a town manager, so it's, you know, normally it would go from Matt and the town manager. Get whatever it is, town manager initials it, goes to me, then goes to you guys for signature. So that piece of paper is gonna be seen ultimately four times. But it's all about, you know, accountability and making sure it's out of the right account and making, you know.
Yep.
So we need to do one more thing, and that is we need to exit our work session, go into your emergency session. And sign those warrants from the bar swiping. This close, you're this close.
We're this close. This don't have to be executive, it's just signing warrants for the, for the town meeting coming, correct?
Right.
So we can leave the recorder going.
Yep.
Yep, well, let's have it.
I gave it to you. I gave them all to you, there were three sitting on the table.
So you just need one of them, son?
I just need one, I prefer two, so I can have the town clerk copy.
It's gonna be the last one on my pile.
Oh, right there, that looks like it might be it.
Right here.
It's three pages, okay.
Okay.
Do you actually have to say it's what exit and work session going into?
Okay, it is eight twenty nine. And we're gonna exit work, work session and we are gonna go into. An emergency select board meeting to, um. For us to sign the warrant for a special town meeting. Now, let's read it. So you've gone through this one, Michelle, on the general government.
Yep, we needed to take the word raised and appropriated out.
Okay.
And that just, we're just gonna appropriate the money from the general fund.
What was the reason for that? Cause we already raised it and then the budget was changed? Cause in theory, you kinda gotta raise it, right?
We never raised it, you raised it in taxes. So because our taxes have already been committed. And we've already sent the bills out, we can't raise it. You can only appropriate it.
Got it.
And, um, when I was talking to MMA, there's a way that we should really write our articles different, which I did not know. You put and or. So somebody can make the option to. Let's not raise that money, let's just appropriate it from this account. So it gives you.
So it leaves it open on the floor, so the people.
Might have a, yep.
If they have a different vision, you can go in that direction without a hole.
Regime rule, yeah.
So and or.
That's a good idea.
Yep, and she gave me a whole.
So this has been vetted by them at this point.
At this point, yep.
This is correct.
She was on the phone with me, I took out every single raised in those accounts. While she was on the phone with me, I took out every single raised in those accounts.
And just changed it for appropriate? So you just changed to appropriate rather than put and or?
Right, because you can't do and or right now, because we can't raise any money.
We're beyond the tax, tax cycle.
Now, I don't understand, at one point, somebody, I think it was Josh, actually from Hamlin, that said. You could actually do a second billing. In that case, you would be raising again.
Right, so it would be an option, but probably not a popular one.
Right, exactly. So. One word, just one word. Yep.
Have you talked to Robbie Haley about this? Does he know that?
I have not talked to him.
We need to, we need to make a note to call Robbie in the morning, just let him know we had an and or situation and we just changed the date. To, to fix it.
Have we put that out on social media yet too, that it's been changed?
We. We have put red on the front page of our website and both on Facebook. Um, that the, that has been canceled. For, for Saturday and the new date. And then tomorrow morning, the first thing we need to do is put that up. On the website.
Repost the new one. So you're gonna call, you're gonna call Robbie tomorrow and just tell him nothing's changed other than we had a glitch and it's gonna be the twenty-four?
Yep. We've also already called the pastor, made sure that we were all set there and we're, we're good there.
That was my next question.
Did we call Paul Davis?
Yep, we've called, um, we touched base with him and let him know that there was a date change also.
Yeah, I saw him today. He knew. And this is the ten thousand that we talked about earlier in the meeting.
Yep, for the IT services.
I'm excited about that.
Me too, actually. And I'm, I'm really excited after talking to the engineer tonight.
And without Mike being here, does he have to come in and sign it or does two signatures make it?
Two signatures a quorum. Yep, I'm good there. I can roll it again.
Okay, it's eight thirty-four and.
Do we have to make a motion to end this one?
No, it's really not a, let's make a motion.
Make a motion to end it.
To adjourn. Second that and it's a vote, we're done.